The next speaker is Mr. Ali Shajra of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on books.
Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. Hi, my name is Ali Shajra. I am a student of Salana School. I'm pleased to be here. I have some words and thoughts I would like to share. I hope during this meeting and future meetings, there's an Arabic translator and other language translators, so others can understand or on what those meetings are about. I think it's best if there is websites and other language and other language letting others know whatever being said or decisions made by the board. I believe that instead of teaching us things that will hurt our feelings and our parents' beliefs, we should be taught stuff, subjects that we will benefit from, like technology, computer skills, languages like Arabic, Spanish, French, and other things like that. We need to learn what we will need in the future and what will build America. Parents should be told what will be given to their children, especially if it's against their religion and not okay with Christians, Muslims, and other religious beliefs. So, parents can have trust when their parents are gone for seven hours a day. And lastly, please think about us. We are the children of this generation and future parents of more children. I hope our education doesn't relate to politics. Please let us live our childhood. Thank you for letting me speak.
Next speaker is Mr. Wadi Azaba of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on books.
Salaam alaikum, allah muslimun. And good evening, members of the Board of Education. At the front end of this issue is explicit sexual material made accessible or taught to students, which is illegal in Michigan law section 722.675, titled "Disseminating, Exhibiting, or Displaying Sexually Explicit Matter to Minors." But let's be very clear that at the core of this issue is an ideological battle. And it seems like, and I hope I'm mistaken in my assessment, that some members of this board have inclined towards an insane liberal LGBT ideology that holds many fanatical views, but non-so deranged as the idea that pornography is good and students should have access to pornographic material in school as part of education? And I don't accuse you of holding these stances. However, the way that you've handled it so far is somewhat doubting. The book challenging process you presented is, I'm sorry, a joke, because any pornographic books on any sexuality, whether on homosexuality, incest, pedophilia, zoophilia, or other forms of sexual perversions, is illegal and should never been on ourselves to start with. And what's extremely upsetting, what's extremely upsetting is that people like Abdullah Hamud and the lady, what's her name, Rashida or something, and the other goblins influencing them want to propagate this as an issue. Quote, he says, "Children having the tools to create their own future." This is pure shenanigans, because you would allow materials on incest, zoophilia, or pedophilia for the same reason. So, this is not about, quote, he says, "Our library is serving a gateway to knowledge, imagination." And this is ridiculous. This is about where we draw the line and the moral corruption that the majority of us in Dearborn frankly and proudly don't accept. This is about the deliberate targeting of students. This is about the deliberate targeting of students with certain toxic and decent content of an insane ideology that students must not be around. And the reality is, the proponents of LGBT liberal ideology here and elsewhere are fine with democracy as long as people vote for their fanatical views and as long as it supports their wicked agendas. If people vote against their views, the liberal authority blocks the democratic process and imposes the LGBT liberal positions on the populace. They are Hitler. They are the oppressors. They are radical extremists. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the Board of Education, if democracy matters, we are the majority here in Dearborn. Let us draw the boundaries on appropriateness. And I urge you not to fuel the tensions and to truly support the majority decisions of families, students, and parents in Dearborn regarding what is appropriate content to allow or teach in our schools. And as far as we're concerned, our unity here is a blessing from Allah, Subhanahu Wa Ta'ala. And through this evil, we're able to know who to vote in or out.
Next speaker is Ms. Kathy Martin of Dearborn Heights. Would like to speak to the board on welcoming all our students.
May I also please remind people again, do not use names.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Martin, and I've worked in Dearborn for 20 years. As educators, our main roles is, one of our main roles is to advocate for students. In advocating for students, we also advocate for parental collaboration. And we want parents involved in their own education. So, I'm really happy to see so many people have turned out. And I hope to see every one of my students' parents at parent teacher conferences this year. Becoming an educator is a calling. If you ask most educators, many will tell you that they knew their career path at a very young age. I personally knew by the time I was in second grade. We enter the field knowing that we are in a lifetime commitment to young people. We were called to enter a field where we are paid less than professionals with the same level of education. We were called to enter a field that takes us away from our own children, so we can tend to your children. We are called to enter a field where we are underappreciated and overworked. In addition to teaching, reading, writing, math, and history, we teach kids how to get along, how to solve problems, and how to be good citizens in a democracy. This is a labor of love. We do this because we have been called to be here. Our career is our purpose. We signed up for the good, bad, and ugly. We did not sign up to be political pawns. I can't stand idly by while public education is vilified for political gain. I've seen a quote stating that students who are loved at home come to school to learn, and students who aren't come to school to be loved. We are here to teach, love, and accept all children, all staff, and all families. The only way for a child to learn and grow is to first feel safe. And I promise, your child will be safe in my presence regardless of their background or family structure. Public school is where every single person who walks in feels safe and cared for. When we are safe and cared for, when the kids are safe and cared for, they will flourish and grow into happy, productive adults.
Next speaker is Mr. Muhammad Shajra of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on books.
Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullah. I think so, all of us here is speaking English. Yes, some family at home, they don't understand English. Because that, I will speak Arabic. And I will try to translate to English. It's a family, don't be laughing. It's not funny. I have a couple questions for you. Mr. Hassan, you're speaking Arabic. Adel, you're speaking Arabic. You can translate to him later. Maybe because we need that. نحتاج أولا إلى قانون يجرّب تدريس الكتب هذه في المدارس. لماذا المدارس؟ لماذا المدارس؟ تمام؟ وما الهدف منها حتى تستهدف بالكتب؟ هل أكتملت المكتبات بالكتب المفيدة حتى تضيفوا كتب مخليه وغير عقلانية؟ وهل في قانون يحدد العمر لقراءة هذه الكتب؟ الأهالي يحتاجون يحافظوا على أولادهم. هل تفكرون بمشاعر أبناءنا أولا وبناتنا والأهالي؟ هل تفكرون بغلق الأهالي عند ذهابهم إلى المدارس؟ أبناء وبنات. يدرس الأبناء في المنازل ويعلم في المنازل على شيء. وأنتم تريدون أن تعلمهم على الفسد. وهذا لا يتطابق وقد يسبب مشاكل عند الأبناء والطرابات في التعليم. هل تدعمكم أو ترشيكم بعض المؤسسات حتى تبيعوا أبناء الجالية؟ إذا كان شراءكم بالمال تبيعوا، فنحن نعرف لمن نصوت. أخواني، أخواتي في الداخل وخلف الشاشات. نحن عصرنا هذه الفاء الذي أمامنا. فلا تضحيوا بأبناءكم لكي يفوز الشخص سواء كان من الحزبة الدموقراطية أو الحزبة الجمهورية حتى تدرسوه جيدا. لأن الفوز الشخص قد يخسركم خسارة أبناءكم كامل. فاختاروا الشخص المناسب في المكان المناسب. أولادنا كآمريكيين. آمريكيين بيض وسود وعرب. كلنا ضد هذا الكتب. والسلام عليكم.
Next speaker is Mr. Hamad Fadl of Detroit. Would like to speak to the board on books. Next speaker is Brandy Ahmed. Would like to speak to the board on community support of Dearborn.
Good evening, board members. My name is Brandy Ahmed. I am a resident here in Dearborn, and I have three children here in the Dearborn School District. I'd like to start off, I'd like to thank you all for sitting up here and taking the heat and the criticism. It takes a very thick skin to do that. So, thank you. I appreciate that. I'd like to thank our mayor, Mr. Abdullah Hamud, who has made it very clear that no matter what, he will protect books at all costs. And every book will remain in our libraries here in the city of Dearborn. So, thank you for that. I'm not going to really speak too much about the book banning here within the school district. What I really want to focus on is a lot of our LGBTQ members in our community, including students, are watching. And, you know, a lot of people are saying, we're not making it about them. We're, you know, we're not trying to reject them. We're not canceling them out. But we've had people stand up here and say, "I am a gay person," and you hear the boos, and you hear some of the explicit, and it's heartbreaking. You cannot say that it is not about that. And so, really, my message today, and I'm going to read it. Also, I'd like to give a shout out to our Dearborn High School marching band who got all ones this week in festival. So, let's recognize that as a positive here in our district. My message in common today is for the LGBT community and students. Like I said, many have said that this isn't about them. But seeing signs like "Leave your dirty books in the closet" and other hateful remarks that have been made here and online, we, and I say "we" as a community, because we are a community. We have all the local news stations here. We have national reporters here. They look at us as "we," Dearborn, one community. So, I will say "we" when I am speaking in regards to all of us. We clearly are still witnessing and displaying dehumanizing behaviors of hate and unacceptance. Some are loud and proud, and some are just outright mean. And then we have some that are really trying to look at both sides and listen. I really, I have a family with multiple LGBTQ members in it. And we are proud of that. But I've watched a lot of people struggle, and I've watched people that I love struggle and to the point of suicide. It is devastating. And so, what I want to say to our LGBT community members who are listening, to the students who are listening and watching this, you are seen, you are important, you matter, you have worth. And I encourage them to continue to be authentically and peacefully themselves. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jojo Grimmel of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on transgender and queers in DPS.
Hi, I'm Jojo. I'm an alumni of DPS, and I started working at a school running a before and after school program. I am queer and transgender. More specifically, I am non-binary, and I use "they/them" pronouns. While this is a huge part of my overall identity, and I'm very proud to be queer and transgender, it is not my entire identity. When you are young, it is incredibly difficult to be unable to put names to what you're feeling and experiencing. It was only very recently I was able to put the name to the cold, lonely, and isolating feeling I get as gender dysphoria. Had I been aware of the books and resources available to students in the libraries, I have no doubt I would have had an easier time accepting myself and relating to others.
Please allow the speaker to speak.
Being LGBTQ plus is not a choice. And it is so hard to have your mind stuck in a body you feel isn't your own while people hate you for the very thing out of your control. People who don't know the first thing about you only that you're different from them, so you must be evil. I honestly don't want to be here, but I know what it's like to have been a queer and trans student and now a staff member. I personally found a way to deal with the blatant transphobia I faced as a student through my peers and staff members, even though I still deal with it on a daily basis. I refuse to let other children be traumatized in the same way I was. I need to fight for the queer and transgender kids because I was one of them, and I didn't have anyone in the system fighting for me. I'm 19, and I'm so tired, I feel it in my bones. But I will not give in to the hatred. We are here, we are queer, and we're not going anywhere. LGBTQ plus people will keep existing in the world whether or not you want to erase our existences. And if you take these books out of schools where children are sent to learn, you are aiding and endangering LGBTQ youth's lives. I stand firm in what I believe, and I will not back down. It's as simple as not buying mustard if you don't like it. If you don't want to read it, don't check it out. If these books are banned, the only other alternative would be to turn to the internet, a wildly vast place full of misinformation and bigotry. These books written by queer and transgender authors for queer and transgender kids are the most reliable and safe options. My question is, why would you take this resource from kids who need it? Don't pretend you're all doing this for anyone except yourselves. You aren't protecting your children. You're all...
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Abdul Nasrin Najjar of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on book selection.
While we're waiting for that speaker, I just want to say one thing real quickly. We are all human up here. We're doing the best we can. We make mistakes. Please understand that. Thank you.
Salaam alaikum wa rahmatullahi wa barakatuh. First of all, I want to thank the little boy here for what he said, because that's why we are here. We are here for this. We are here for our kids. And when I say "selection book," I didn't say banning books. So, we are here to select the right books for our kids. We're not here to just ban any book for no reason. There are reasons to remove these books from the shelves. And you guys have to understand the fact that it's your responsibility to do that. Not mine, not them. We're here because you guys failed to do that. You're talking about revising a process. It's been there for years. But why we're here? The process has failed. You don't need to enhance that process. Get rid of that process. Come up with a completely new process. That's for the parents. When you say, "Oh, we revise that process. This is going to be good." No, we all know that. This is a trash. You're just now trying to calm the parents with this nonsense talking. We are not targeting any group. And I'm talking about myself, that I'm not targeting any group. I was sent by my family here to get education because they know back home, US has the best education in the world. Education, science, physics, math, to enhance the brain of the kids. They did not send me to look to some books like... I can't say, because it's... When I discuss with my daughter, she's going to have to ask me, "Dad, why these books are on the shelf for us?" How can I justify that to her? You guys are parents. And I know you guys taken a lot of heat for that. I know it's your job, but it's a lot of heat because now it's becoming a national issue. But please, do not undermine any parents. It is not your job to undermine parents. Your job is listen to them. And the last thing I want to say, it feels sad to me that we are up against teachers. No, we're not. Who's trying to put up the parents against teachers? That's stupid. My mom is a teacher. She is now principal. She's a teacher for 30 or 40 years. And I respect teachers. So, I feel bad when all the teachers coming up here is just trying to defend and then point at parents. We work together.
Next speaker is Jamal Hyafi of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on books.
Good evening, board. I think after three hours of listening to the parents, after three hours of listening to the parents, what else can we say? The board today sent an email, and they basically admitted or confirmed that such material should not be included in our school media center. And they also stated the law number, MCL Act 33, section, you know, until the end. So, you believe in that, okay? And you send it to us. And you heard the parents, the majority of the parents, saying that we don't want these books. So, you stated and reminded us of the law. You heard the parents. Tomorrow morning, start moving these books from the libraries. Start working. That's it. That's what we need from you. Okay? Now, last Monday, some of you talked about the abdout form. I looked at the abdout form. It's either my kids should be banned from all the books, and that's unrealistic, or I should state the title and the author of the book that they shouldn't check. So, I should do your job and check more than 500,000 books to do that? Does that make sense? That doesn't make any sense. You know, why didn't you classify these books and move them out? Move them out? This is very clear from what we heard. This is not a religious matter. It's not against a group. It's not against the teachers. Okay? This is us, loyal to our kids. Not to the right and not to the left, not to any political party. We're not here for a political issue. But we will remember your names when August and November of every year comes. I will remember your names every August and every November comes, if this matters not. So, then I'll make sure, you know, my vote's not for you. And I will be active for that. Thank you.
Next speaker is Christina Camero Nosiri. Would like to speak to the board on how this harms the community and loyalty of what school board is to the community.
Yes, thank you for having me. And I speak here in support of many of my good friends from the city of Dearborn, also with parents. And I'm speaking as a parent and as an educator. As an educator, I have seen throughout our school system how our students are struggling to read. They're struggling to do math. Our students come to school for college and career readiness. Kids do not come to school. And back up, parents do not send their kids to school to explore their sexuality. That is not why people send their children to school. And also, we as a society have to love and be kind to everybody. Absolutely. All of us, even many of us who stand in agreement on this issue of parents' rights disagree on certain issues. But it is a false narrative that parents who do not want their children exposed to graphic sex acts somehow hate somebody. That is nonsense. And when I look at what our kids are exposed to in the media, the last thing they need to do at school is learn how to sexually pleasure themselves. Also, I haven't heard the comment made recently, but many of the speakers here disparage the parents here as though they're being held captive by some right-wing agenda. Like, the parents in this room are too stupid, too ignorant, to come to their own conclusions like they don't have their own set of morality to not want their kids exposed to this content. I'm speaking as a parent. We, the parents of America, are tired of the schools turning into social and political machines. Instead of institutions of higher learning, as we are watching the students of America slip behind on a global scale to compete academically, this is not the time for more sexualization. And also, parents have a right to determine what their kids are exposed to. I think it is absolutely unacceptable for people in education to think that they know what's best for somebody else's child. God gave me my child, not the school district. And I guarantee you that every parent agrees. And every parent has a right to object to the things their kids are being exposed to. But there is a breaking point. And the breaking point is this. The fundamental existence of school is not to learn about sexual pleasure, to not to learn about new sex acts. The fundamental purpose of school is to prepare our kids to be successful adults who can go off and have careers. And it is up to every parent to then teach their kids morality. It is out of the place for the school to do it. And I reject any notion that parents here are filled with hate or bigotry. The parents don't want their kids sexualized. If other people want to sexualize their kids, that's their business, not our...
Next speaker is Fuad Al-Baghdani of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board on dirty books. Fuad, Fuad Al-Baghdani. Next speaker is Jeff Davis of Dearborn. Would like to speak to the board about sexual materials in children curriculum.
Good evening. And good evening, school board and teachers and parents. If I could, I'd be nice to lower the temperature a little bit as we talk about this. I'm very thankful for this city and for the schools. My kids graduated from schools here, and I now have grandchildren in the school. Two of my children are educators, although not in this city. And we need education. It's very, very important. And teachers have a really big job to do. And it's already been mentioned. Look at all the subjects that have to be taught and learned well. Reading, writing, arithmetic, science, technology, and the art of getting along with other people. That's very, very important. And as this lady very well said, it's not about teaching them sexuality. That's not really the duty of the schools. And so, the teachers shouldn't be made to be responsible to teach sexuality. They're not authorized to do it, and they're not actually able to do it. And so, let's keep that out of the schools. Some educators and education boards mistakenly think it's their duty to raise other people's children, especially when it comes to sexuality and gender identity. In some cities, schools are even doing things that their parents don't agree to and don't know about. When the children come to school, they're helping the child dress in a different way according to a different sex, take on a different identity when they're at school, and then change back when they go home. Now, God forbid that that should happen here. But it's happening in real cities, in real schools, in America. And teachers mistakenly think it's their job to do that. And it's not their job, and they're not helping children. And they're not really doing the responsibility that we've authorized them to do, although some people think so. Now, my daughter and her husband are both teachers. They have two little boys, my grandsons. They love their children very much. We love them. And they love their students. But they know the difference between their students and their children. And they can say, "These are my kids." And they mean, "These are my students." And they care for them, and they love them. And when they say, "These are my kids, and they're their children," they love them. But there's a difference. They send those children back to their parents, and they're not undermining the parents' tutelage and the parents raising them. So, I just think this is a fundamental idea. I know, it's like I've been in a time machine back in 1995 in another city, very similar to this. I know, it's like I've been in a time machine back in 1995 in another city, very similar to this. This kind of thing went on, and it's, it's only gotten worse. So we really need to rethink this whole thing. It is not the responsibility of the school boards and the teachers to raise children in issues of sexuality.
Next speaker is Abdullah Ahmed of Dearborn, would like to speak to the board on pushing sexual ideology on teens and pre-teens. Abdullah Ahmed? Either side would work.
Assalamualaikum. And for anyone who does not speak Arabic, this means may peace be upon you. Keyword, peace. Don't misconstrue our religion and culture. We are here for peace of mind. My name is Abdullah Ahmed, and I grew up in Dearborn schools and lived in Dearborn my whole life. I think I can say on behalf of the majority of our community that we don't care whether the pornographic photos and erotic speech are homosexual, lesbian, or straight. If there is pornography in any books available to kids and teens, we want that out, gay or not. And to one person earlier saying that porn in books is the American way, keep that phony American way in your home, not in our communities. Parents have responsibilities and try to upbringing their children in the best way possible, and they send their kids to school, which is supposed to be a safe haven, come to find out these books and schools are teaching kids to make decisions they are not capable of making. You aren't their parents, and if parents want to show this kind of disgusting material to their kids, that is their choice to be made at home, not at school. Nobody is perfect, and everybody makes mistakes, but mistakes are quickly resolved, or at least a great effort is given to make things right. Why are we split in the first place? Does the LGBT community show porn to their kids growing up? I don't think so. As a married man and inshallah a parent in the future, this scares me. I do not accept this, and Dearborn should not accept this.
Next speaker is Shadi Maori of Dearborn, would like to speak to the board about the current situation.
Assalamualaikum, everyone. Good evening. First and foremost, I'd like to ask everyone to just hold the clapping till the end, just for all the speakers in general. I'd like to offer you guys a student perspective from my opinion. As I'm not a parent, but I am a former graduate of Dearborn Public Schools, and actually, this is, this was my middle school stout. Being here just brings back so many memories. Aside the point, the reason why many of us are here today is, isn't about censorship. As Americans living in this country, we're well aware of the First Amendment, the freedom of speech, religion, expression. We're here to talk about the explicit sexual content in, in certain books in Dearborn Public Schools. Children are at school for almost about eight hours a day, which is practically half their day, not counting the time that they're asleep. So I would say that a school is a children, a child's second home besides from their actual home. This is where children are taught. That's how, where they grow up. And as a student, growing up in Dearborn Public Schools, I was never exposed to this type of sexuality. I took, um, two sex ed classes, once in a fifth grade and another in seventh grade, but it was like pretty much straightforward, talked about safe sex, HIV, etc. But to find out, to hear that there are certain books in our, in a school community, which I am prideful to call home, is honestly disappointing. And to the school board, I hope you guys can see where the community is coming from. This isn't an attack to you guys directly or to the teachers, because we are well aware of all the hard work that you guys all do. This is just about the sexualization of children, the exposing of children to these, this type of content. We are aware that this content is on the internet and everywhere, but we're talking about just these books specifically. This isn't an attack to the LGBTQ community or anyone in particular. Like I said, this is America. It's a free country. Thank you, everyone.
Next speaker is Adam Mil, Mil, uh, the, the name, the, it's not as clear, but I think it's Miller Bond. Would like to speak, of Dearborn, would like to speak to the board on the review and removal of books from the school libraries. Adam Miller Bond? Okay. There are not here, okay? Mr. Ali Cindy of Dearborn would like to address the board on why we give parent rights to vote. And each school depends on how many kids they have in schools. Ali Cindy? Next speaker is Jarallah Shariyan of Dearborn, would like to speak to the board on books. Jarallah? Next speaker is Mahdi, or Sami Mahdi of Dearborn, would like to speak to the board on books.
Hello, my name is Sami Mahdi, and I am from Woodworth Middle School, and I am in the sixth grade. These books are influencing us youth in a negative way. These books are unacceptable and inappropriate for people of all ages, let alone the youngsters. Their presence alone in the library affecting the youth of this community, making the library an uncomfortable, disgraceful, and unethical place to be. These unethical books do not benefit, do not benefit us in developing a stronger character with integrity and honesty, although they do the opposite. What is the central, the library to you? The central library to me is a respected place in a sanctuary to better myself. These unethical books are mostly in our library, and most of us students go to the library as a safe haven. And just knowing that these books are in our environment is disturbing. And we students do not feel comfortable in the library knowing these pedophilia-like books are present in the heart of our community. What can we replace these meaningless books with? We can replace these books with positive and beneficial books we can actually learn from and positively influenced and educated by. We cannot let these books affect the youth of our community. We are an anti-Semitic, we are not anti-Semitic nor hateful people towards any group of people. We respectfully request the board to remove these books from the library and end this crisis, and that's all right.
Next speaker is Muhsin Hawashi of Dearborn Heights, would like to address the board on the issue of the topic. Muhsin Al-Hawashi? Next speaker is Rawan Haydar of Dearborn, would like to speak to the board on parental ban of books.
Can, give us just a moment. She can't, the microphone isn't working. Give us just a moment. Try again, please.
Can you try the other mic, please?
Better? Yes, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rawan Haydar. I'm a third-year law student at Michigan State University, a Lebanese Muslim-American, and I have been a proud resident of Dearborn for 25 years. Before I begin, I want to warn those listening in present that what I speak about today may be triggering for some. 16 to 19 years old, that is the age range when most young girls are in high school or just starting college. This also happens to be the age range in which females are four times more likely than the general population to be victims of sexual assault, attempted rape, or even rape itself. 16 to 19. This also happens to be the major topic of the novels Push and The Lovely Bones, which are two books that are currently under review. How about another one? It is estimated that every one in six individuals identifies as being a part of the LGBTQ plus community. That means for every classroom of 30 students, there are five of those students who are part of the community. The novels This Book Is Gay and All Boys Aren't Blue, which are also currently under review, gives real-life insight and a breakdown of what it means to grow up not identifying as a straight individual. These books have been deemed pornographic, against good Muslim values, or as being set out to carry on some sort of homosexual agenda. Many parents here tonight are under the assumption that the only resolution is to ban them. However, the First Amendment is not dead. The truth is that the statistics that I have discussed here do not exempt the Dearborn community. As strong and as united as this community has proved itself to be, there are still young females amongst us and throughout our own community who are suffering or have suffered at the hands of their abusers. And despite the strong religious presence within this community, that does not take away the fact that there are still young adults out here in the Dearborn Public School system who are struggling to come to terms with their sexuality. For better or for worse, books are the gateway to independent, critical thought, imagination, and understanding of differing experiences. And to force a ban on books that will 100% benefit students who identify and resonate with the themes we've talked about tonight is an act of selfishness and intolerance. I understand that not every parent is okay with their child being exposed, but the board and its media specialists have taken the time to curate a wonderful equitable mechanism that adheres to both state and federal law and gives parents precisely what they want, right? So why has this become public news? Why are we here today? Our chief police was not mistaken on Monday when he said the eyes of the nation are on us. What have we shown the nation? We have shown that we, as a minority population of primarily Middle Eastern Muslim-Americans, have forgotten our own struggle with hatred, discrimination, prejudice, and violence. We have forgotten the signs that were held up against us, the isolation, the pain and fear we have all felt because those harming us couldn't take a step back to see what, to see who we were as people. I urge the Dearborn community to please reflect on this when they pull up the signs.
Next speaker is Ihab Al-Madhawi of Dearborn, would like to speak to the board on child ed. Ihab? Next speaker is Mike Krug of Dearborn, would like to speak to the board on books.
Hello, thank you. I'd like to talk a bit about some books. I think everyone is familiar with Romeo and Juliet. Well, in Act 3, Scene 5, there's an underage sex that happens in Romeo and Juliet. But that book is not on the banned list. Why? Because it's not gay. That's why. There's another book called The Diary of Anne Frank, where she talks about how her thoughts on sex and sexuality, and while she was hiding from the Nazis. That book is not on the banned list because it's straight. It is not about the book, just like many people have already said here. It's, people who say they're not bigoted are the people who are trying to ban the books, and the people who are saying they're being silenced, and the people who are saying they feel attacked and ostracized are the people of the LGBT gay community. If I were to believe one over the other, I would believe those people that are feeling attacked. You're the one that keeps saying you're being a bigot. In any case, I didn't accuse anyone of being a bigot. Uh, you, people keep saying they're not bigots. What I'm trying to point out is that the people who keep saying they're not bigots are not part of the community that's being targeted. The people who are targeted, the LGBT community, keep saying they're being targeted, keep saying they're being silenced. There's been a lot of talk already about suicide rates in the LGBT community. If the theory here is that we're trying to help children and protect children, then we need to keep these books in schools because that will help them not commit suicide. Or is that not really the truth? And finally, if I can say anything else, uh, to the LGBT community, these people who are trying to silence you are terrified of you. They think that reading your books will turn their children gay, which is like me saying, if I read a comic book, I can fly. It is a nonsense statement. So stop being afraid of these books. If you're really worried about them, I don't know, maybe talk to your kids about them, read them with them, give them context. Try something like that. And finally, I lost my train of thought because applause makes me uncomfortable, so good night.
Our last in-person, um, comment would be like, I call Amar El-Rahi to the stage.
Please may we have quiet. Thank you.
She would like to come to speak to the board about books, and she's from Garden City. Go ahead.
Good evening, my fellow brothers and sisters. My name is Amar Annahi. I am a 22-year-old American citizen, born and raised in Dearborn, Michigan. I can confidently say that never in my life did I ever think that I would have to question our state's ability to protect our kids. As an educator, I will not condone such reckless and dangerous actions taken upon by the Board of Education. When was it okay to enforce inappropriate sexual contact, on, content on our children? If books about weaponry and violence are banned from libraries in order to prevent premature damage on impressionable kids, how are books with content that could easily be considered pornography any less dangerous? Guns kill people and porn kills brains. The damage is quite slyer, but no less influential. But in the United States of America, kids that are 17 and younger, orphans are mandated by court to live in foster homes, and because of that, they are old enough, they aren't old enough to be independent, to work for themselves, to pay for themselves, and to even think for themselves. So I ask the Board of Education, since children are seemingly old enough to read or look at such promiscuous content, why can't they live independently, drink what they want, smoke what they want? There's a reason they can't, and that's because they are impressionable bodies, given to us as a trust from God to nurture and mold them into human beings in our great American society. But not, but not only are children incredibly impressionable, they can be extremely impulsive. The decisions they make are always factored by the friends they have, the shows they watch, and the books they read. And of course, I must say, I'm not here to bash the LGBTQ community. That's not my intention, and to be completely honest, at the moment, I couldn't care less. What I can say, though, what I can say, though, is that we seem to care a little too much. Are that, are we that wimpy that we deny facts in order to safeguard feelings? Have emotions overcome the world to such an extent that they've seeped into politics into a way that our laws are enforcing me to accept delusion and gender dysphoria? But it seems we're, but it seems we're fighting the masses. Schools are more fit to teach our kids about forms of sexuality than the things that would actually contribute to their education. But according to the school board, these books are imperative into the development of our children, and our kids can have a gateway to imagination and a gateway to knowledge. Am I right, mayor? These are your words, but I'm certain you would take them back if you understood it's vile and has its consequences. And before I go, I must say to the people behind me, thank you for showing up, because regardless of why you're here, you're here for the sake of our kids. So please, after this meeting, ask your children what they are learning in school. They need your help as much as this states. Let's become more involved in our kiddos' lives and hopefully gain more connections in their districts and community. Our kids are our future, and they need all the help they can get. Thank you for your time and attention.
Next, I will read from the blue cards for those who submitted a blue card but did not wish to speak. Uh, this is from Yaya Al-Gami. She said, they said that they do not wish to speak to the board, but they would like to make the following comment. Don't touch, don't touch, touch, teach sex in class. Next, this person is anonymous from Dearborn Heights. I fear my children being exposed to the sexual content of anything the school board wished to expose my children to in the future. Next is from Dearborn Heights, Mostafa Al-Morsi. I worry for my future children, even as a 23-year-old, and what the full, the school board will expose my children to in the future. Next, from Dearborn, Mohammed Mareh. I don't want my kids to learn about sex. Next, Rebecca DeHulu, DeHulu from Dearborn. Our children have access to the whole world on their phones. This is not about books. Please protect our children, particularly our LGBTQ plus children. Next, from Amar Baydoun from Dearborn, representing himself. Please remove all explicit sexual books from our libraries for sake for children. Next, a concerned parent. Please remove any sexual explicit books from our school libraries. Next, from Dearborn, representing myself, himself and family from Asmahan Mashra. Please read my statement attached. Hello, I'm writing to you as a parent and an educator of Dearborn Public Schools. Over the past few weeks, it has been disheartening to see our community be broken up and pitted against one another. Schools versus parents, district versus community, and to do so in the most disrespectful ways. To do so with misinformation and an agenda to divide. There shouldn't be a divide. We have one purpose and mission to make sure that our students get the best education in the best manner aligned with our state standards. Students first, always. As parents, we have every right to be concerned with our students' education, but there is a manner in which is a manner in which we can question and raise concerns with curriculum, books and lessons that is respectful, and not in a way that is accusing our teachers of slanderous things, or in a form of harassment, which is what we have been happening in the last few weeks. As a parent, every question I ever had regarding my child was asked and answered. I’m with teachers and admin to relay my concerns, and was never once turned away. I was always welcomed into the school, classroom, and meeting without hesitation. Our job is to make sure as parents, we show up and ask to meet with our teachers, admin, etc. We should be raising our concerns in a respectful way that allows for community growth, and not in a manner that divides us. Thank you, your fellow community member. Next, from Muna Mashra, representing myself and family. I’m a proud parent of three Dearborn school students. I am shocked by the vitriol and countless attacks against our teachers these past two months. There have been slanderous claims that our teachers are groomers and pedophiles and are indoctrinating children through the curriculum. All the while, the district has not publicly addressed the misinformation and slander as it continues. As a parent, I would like to see the district issue a statement that clarifies that curriculum, the curriculum misinformation, and takes a stand against the slander being directed against our teachers. It’s not just the statement made about the book reviews. Enough is enough. The only way to push back against these falsehoods is to, is with clear factual information that is translated into Arabic and made available in audio formats, too. Not all, not all our families are literate in Arabic. These people have created divisions and broken the trust between the community and the district. Address these lies directly to begin to repair the harm they have caused. Next, from Dearborn, representing themselves, Abbas Al-Masi. As a father, I do not want you to teach my kids sexuality. Next, Gamal Said from Dearborn. Don’t teach sex to my kids. Next, Abdullah Ali from Dearborn. No sex in school. Next, El-Baidani from Dearborn. I disagree with sexuality taught. Next, Deborah Bondi from Dearborn. We need to restore funding for media, media centers, have confidence in the media specialist. Books should not be banned because the kids that need these books are the ones whose parents are looking to ban books. Next, from Johnny Williams from Dearborn, representing themselves. My First Amendment right to be heard and also to be able to hear other people’s Next, Jennifer Cordy from Gross Eel, representing Dearborn teachers. Everyone is welcome, everyone is loved, and everyone is safe. Next, Joe Winkle, representing Dearborn teachers. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joe Winkle, and I am a teacher in Dearborn Public Schools at Miller Elementary. I originally completed my student teaching at Gear Park roughly eight years ago, and I’m thrilled to have been welcomed back to this community last year. I am sorry I cannot be there tonight to share these thoughts with you myself, but I am needed at home to help care for my four-month-old son. As I’m sure most of us understand, the love of a parent has for their child will take priority over everything in their lives. Sadly, the love this community has for its children is being taken advantage of by a wolf in sheep’s clothing. This wolf has joined the flock not to help, but divide and conquer, to lead the flock to slaughter for the good of its pack. The pack this wolf belongs to wants to attack public education and public school teachers. They are willing to sacrifice this community, the Arab-American community and the Muslim community, to accomplish this goal. They are willing to smear, to smear the good names of these communities to accomplish their goal. Public schools are a safe place where students of all cultures, religions, and races should feel safe. This pack of predators wants to stop that from happening, and they are willing to lead this community, this flock to slaughter, to make that happen. Parents and teachers want the same thing, for children to grow in a safe space. Please, let the schools and the parents stand together against this hate to make our community even stronger for the children and save their schools. Do not let the wolves, the true predators, manipulate us into fighting each other. That’s the end.